Hello, everybody. This is our study session for, first study session for test two. And we have a study guide for test two. I didn't know if everybody has that printed out. Do you have a copy of the study guide? Okay. So what I'm planning on doing today is whatever you'd like for me to do. And if you don't have any suggestions, then we'll just study together in terms of learning definitions, going over proofs, also being able to state certain things, we'll practice that. But I want to open up a floor to any questions you might have to start with. So are there any things that you say, "Well, I wish we would do this"? Megan, do you have any desires in terms of what we cover? Okay. Well, everybody who's here just said, "Okay". With that being the case, I'd like to start off by the definitions. I think there are, what I said, there are going to be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, looks like 11 definitions. That's not too many. So let's go ahead and make sure that we know those. So first definition is called, it's an increasing sequence. So, hi. Audrey, will you decide that we're just going to start from the beginning in terms of learning definitions? If that's okay? And so, first definition is an increasing sequence. What is an increasing sequence? A sequence, X sub n, is said to be increasing if for all n element natural numbers, X sub n is less than or equal to X sub n plus one. To be increasing means the next term is either bigger than or equal to the previous term. So X sub n is less than or equal to X sub n plus one. The next term got bigger, or at least didn't get smaller. John, what does it mean for a sequence to be increasing?
Sequence X sub n is an increasing sequence if X sub n is less than or equal to X sub n plus one for all N element of natural numbers.
Mariah, do you know what it means to be an increasing sequence?
A sequence X sub n is said to be an increasing sequence for all X element natural numbers, or N element natural numbers, if X sub n is less than or equal to X sub n plus one.
Is that what you mean? Audrey, can you say what it means to be an increasing sequence, searching your past?
I'll try. A sequence is increasing if for all N element of natural numbers, X sub n is less than or equal to X sub n plus one.
That's right. The next one is bigger or equal to. Megan, can you tell me what an increasing sequence is?
A sequence X sub n is said to be increasing if X sub n is less than or equal to X sub n plus one for all N elements of natural numbers.
That's right. Is that okay with everybody? Seems like you know that definition pretty well. I said there were 11 definitions. What's so nice is a few of these definitions are very closely related. And so it's going to be quick to learn them, I think, if we have a trouble with them. And so the next one, B, is what is, two, what does it mean to be a decreasing sequence? My gosh, it's very closely related. So what's a decreasing sequence? A decreasing sequence is a sequence X sub n. A sequence X sub n such that X sub n is going to be greater than or equal to X sub n plus one, and that's for all N element of the natural numbers. So what that says is the next term, the N plus one term, got smaller or has stayed the same as the previous term. That's what we mean. So you didn't get bigger if you're decreasing. That's what we mean. Okay. So John, what about a decreasing? Did you state the definition?
A sequence X sub n is said to be a decreasing sequence if X sub n is greater than or equal to X sub n plus one for all N element of natural numbers.
Megan, can you say what it means to be a decreasing sequence?
A sequence X sub n is said to be increasing if X sub n is greater than or equal to X sub n plus one for all N elements of natural numbers.
Davin, can you say what it means to be a decreasing sequence? Okay. Audrey, can you say what it means to be a decreasing sequence?
A sequence X sub n is said to be decreasing if for all N element of natural numbers, X sub n is greater than or equal to X sub n plus one.
Mariah, decreasing?
A sequence X sub n is said to be decreasing if for all N element of natural numbers, X sub n is greater than or equal to X sub n plus one.
Davin, you say increasing?
Decreasing. It means a sequence X sub n is said to be increasing if for all N element of natural numbers, X sub n is less than X sub n plus one.
Decreasing is what in terms of that last time you said?
X sub n is greater, uh, X sub n plus one.
Or equal. That's right. That's the definition. All right. Look, well, there's something, there's something tied to those two definitions. I bet that's the third. Yes! A monotone sequence, a monotone sequence, monotone sequence. So what's a monotone sequence? A monotone sequence is a sequence that is either increasing or decreasing. So it's doing one of those two. Not every sequence does just one of those two. Minus one to the N is not increasing or decreasing, not monotone. But lots of sequences are monotone, lots of sequences are not. What does it mean to be monotonic? What does it mean to be a monotone sequence? Is a sequence that is either an increasing sequence or a decreasing sequence? That's right. Mariah, what does it mean to be a monotone sequence or monotone sequence?
A sequence that is increasing or decreasing.
That's what the answer is. Audrey, what is a monotone sequence?
Monotone sequence, that's, so X sub n is a sequence that is either decreasing or increasing.
Okay. John, what does it mean to be a monotone sequence?
A monotone sequence is a sequence that's either an increasing sequence or a decreasing sequence.
What about it, now? What is that? What would you find? That's right. Megan, what is, what's a monotone sequence?
A monotone sequence X sub n, and a sequence that is either an increasing sequence or a decreasing sequence.
That's right. What's it mean to be an increasing sequence, Megan?
A sequence X sub n is said to be increasing if X sub n is less than or equal to X sub n plus one for all N elements of natural numbers.
For, what did I ask you? Increasing? And so X sub n is less than or equal to X sub n plus one, that's right. All right. That's three of them. There's only 11, I think. All right. Let's go to another thing. Subsequence. So what's a subsequence? So, so given a sequence, X sub n. Here's what a subsequence. You give me a sequence, X sub n, and a, in, and a sequence of strictly increasing natural numbers, N sub one, less than N sub two, less than N sub three, and so forth. Then, X sub N sub K, K running from one to infinity, is a subsequence of X sub n. I'm going to write it down here. So given X sub n as a sequence, given a sequence, X sub n, and a strictly increasing sequence of natural numbers, N sub one, less than N sub two, less than N sub three, less than forever. Then, X sub N sub K, K running from one to infinity, is a subsequence of X sub n. Megan, is that what you said? Did I make a mistake? That's what it is. It's on the board, so it's going to be easy for us to say it.
I don't mind going to N sub K, but I don't want that.
Yeah, that's okay. There's nothing wrong. Dot, 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 N sub K, but it should go on beyond that. Okay? Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that. So look, to talk about subsequence, it's got to be a subsequence of a sequence. So you get started off with a sequence. And then how do you create this subsequence? Well, we need a strictly increasing sequence of natural numbers that it won't be the indices. It's going to be N sub two, N sub three, and so forth. So. And then X sub N sub K, so this is X sub N sub one, X sub N sub two, X sub N sub three, is a subsequence of X sub n. Anybody want to start off trying it? I know it's on the board. John, you want to try?
X sub n is a sequence, and N sub K is a strictly increasing sequence of natural numbers, then the sequence X sub N sub K is a subsequence of X sub n.
Yes. And we're defining the word subsequence.
Yes, sir.
That's right. Mariah, you want to give it a try?
Given a sequence X sub n, and a sequence of strictly increasing natural numbers, where N sub one is less than N sub two, all the way to N sub K, then X sub N sub K is a subsequence of X sub n.
Okay. Needs a little bit of work, I think, in terms of getting it by yourself. And I think there were some wording that are issues. That's okay. We're working on it. So what I would say is, the first thing is to establish a sequence. So you've got this parent sequence. What's the name of it?
X sub n.
X sub n. So given X sub n. And a strictly increasing sequence of natural numbers. So describe it with words. And then you do the sentence. N sub one, less than N sub two, less than all the way up to N sub K, and beyond, less than from there on out. Then, it's easier this way. X sub N sub K, K running from one to infinity, is a subsequence of the X sub n. Audrey, would you like to try to say it?
Given a sequence, X sub n, a strictly increasing sequence of natural numbers, N sub one is less than N sub two, dot, 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 is less than N sub K, then X sub N sub K is a subsequence of X sub n.
I think you said it correctly. Davin, will you give it a try?
Given a sequence, X sub n, a strictly increasing sequence of natural numbers, N sub one, less than N sub two, is less than, dot, 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 N sub K, and beyond, and N sub, then X sub N sub K is a subsequence.
That's right. Megan? Vexavine, yes. That's right. I didn't catch you off. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Given a sequence, X sub n, and a strictly increasing sequence of natural numbers, N sub one is less than N sub two, and N sub three, then X sub N sub K is a subsequence of X sub n.
I think that was good. That's fine. We're okay with that. Four out of the 11. Not a bad percentage so far in the first 15 minutes of work. Okay, what's next? Next is a Cauchy sequence. Oh, let's try it. What's a Cauchy sequence? So a sequence, X sub n. So we start talking about a sequence. X sub n, real numbers, okay? So a sequence of X, X sub n. Is said to be, said to be a Cauchy sequence if for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a K element of natural numbers. Such that for all m and n bigger than or equal to K, absolute value of X sub n minus X sub n, the distance between those terms, will be less than epsilon. What this means, so I'm going to say it again, just before you say, what it means is to be a Cauchy sequence is that no matter what distance you're giving, that's epsilon, no matter what positive number you're giving, for each one you could possibly give, that represents the distance. I can find this part in a sequence, it's Cauchy, called K, such that from that spot and beyond, no matter what terms you take, from that spot and beyond, you can take the next term and the billionth term further down the road from there. Their distance from each other will be less than epsilon, the number you gave. So you give me some number, how far you have to go into the sequence if it's Cauchy? How far to get to that criteria, that all the terms from that spot on are within that epsilon distance of each other, depends on what epsilon was. So the K depends on epsilon. All right. So I'm going to say it again. Well, a sequence, X sub n. So we start off with sequence, X sub n. It's said to be, what we're talking about? Cauchy! Said to be Cauchy. If for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a natural number K, there exists a K element of natural numbers, such that for all N and N greater than or equal to K, the absolute value of X sub n minus X sub n is less than epsilon. How about it, Megan?
A Cauchy sequence is a sequence of X sub n such that for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a K element of natural numbers such that for all N greater than or equal to K, the absolute value of X sub n minus X sub n is less than epsilon.
That's right. That's right. So in this one, you don't have to worry just about N. You've got to have Ns and Ms. So maybe that's something different. That's the way that you remember. Well, that's different. So I remembered by saying it's different. John, can you say it?
Yes, sir. A sequence, X sub n, is said to be a Cauchy sequence if for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a K element of the natural numbers such that for all N and N bigger than or equal to K, the absolute value of X sub n minus X sub n, X sub m, is less than epsilon.
That's right. Davin, will you give it a try?
A sequence, X sub n, is said to be Cauchy if it's for each epsilon. For each epsilon, there exists a K element of natural numbers such that for all N and N greater than K, the absolute value of X sub n minus X sub n is greater than natural numbers.
X sub what?
Minus X sub n.
Yes, sir? Inside absolute values, less than epsilon. Yes, sir. That's right. Listen, you define things. You've mentioned things in the definition. You're going to be using them later. So we're talking about, for each epsilon, and then later we're talking about, you know, what's it involved with? We're talking about a K, and what does it have for every M and N bigger than K? We say M and N. Where do they come in later? They're the X sub n minus X sub n inside absolute values. Audrey, can you say it?
Cauchy sequence is a sequence, X sub n, such that for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a K element of the natural numbers such that for all N and N bigger than or equal to K, the absolute value of X sub n minus X sub n is less than epsilon.
That's right. Mariah, I think you're last on the list.
Which one comes first, N or M?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. A sequence, X sub n, is said to be a Cauchy sequence if for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a K element of natural numbers such that for all N and N bigger than K, the absolute value of X sub n minus X sub m is greater than epsilon.
Not greater than.
Less than epsilon.
All right. Big difference. We said that, then I count off. So it's going to be less than epsilon. So that means you can make the distance between the terms be as small as you want. All right. All right. That's it. What does it mean for, here's two definitions in there. For X sub n to tend towards infinity. What does that mean? What do you think it means to go towards infinity? What it means is it's bigger than any number. Because that's the idea. Not only does it get bigger, the sequence gets bigger, the terms get bigger than any number. They get bigger than any number, and they stay bigger than any number that you can give me. Okay. So here's how to say it. So I'm going to say it, let's put it again. They stay bigger than any number that you can give me. Okay. So a sequence, X sub n, tends to infinity. A sequence, X sub n, tends to infinity. If for each alpha element of R, for any number you're giving, for each one you could possibly give, for each alpha element of R, there exists a K element of natural numbers, such that for all N bigger than K, X sub n will be bigger than alpha.
What do you mean, bigger than? No. Bigger than everything?
Right. Bigger than or equal to is okay in this definition. Okay? Either one's okay, but I think we say bigger than. Let's see. Let's see what we get. Do you know what we're getting?
Let me check.
I'll check too. Both have been the same, but I think it should just be bigger than. That's what I'd say here.
Yeah. I had bigger than.
Yeah. That's what I would put, bigger than. But I mean, if you write down bigger than or equal to, that is equivalent. It is the same. We should say bigger than, if that's what our definition is. Can you say it, Davin?
A sequence, X sub n, tends towards infinity if for alpha element of real numbers.
Yes.
There exists a K element of the natural numbers.
Okay.
Such that for all N greater than K, X sub n is greater than alpha.
That's right. Okay. What did you say? You know, when we talk about sequences, we got a, we got to find a, we got Epsons, and we got to find a K. Is that all right? So there's going to be Ks involved. Even with the subsequence, there's a K, there's a N sub K. Is that all right? It's a sequence of, there's strictly increasing sequence of natural numbers, N sub K. All right. Tending towards infinity. What about it, Audrey?
A sequence, X sub n, tends towards infinity if for each alpha element of the reals, there exists a K element of the natural numbers such that for all N bigger than or equal to K, X sub n is bigger than alpha.
That's right. Mariah, can you say it?
A sequence, X sub n, tends to infinity if each alpha element real numbers, there exists a K element of natural numbers such that for all N bigger than K, X sub n is bigger than alpha.
Oh, that's right. John, did you say it?
Yes, sir.
Will you say it?
A sequence, X sub n, is said to tend toward infinity if for each alpha element of R, there exists a K element of the natural numbers such that for all N bigger than or equal to K, X sub n is bigger than alpha.
Megan, will you say it?
A sequence, X sub n, tends to infinity if for each alpha element of natural numbers, there exists a K element of natural numbers such that for all N greater than or equal to K, X sub n is greater than.
I think you said it correctly. Everyone, I'm going to tell you the idea. The idea's important. Well, here, I'm just going to say it in your state. And people say, "Well, the idea is this." But in mathematics, we want the idea, and then we want the precision. I'm going to tell you, it's very unlikely that one of us comes up with a better definition than the one that's just given. They spent years working on this. Editing. What should it say? What does it mean? What do we want it to mean? Here's the way we incorporate what we want. They got it. The idea, though, is the following. You want to say that the sequence tends to infinity, no matter what number you're giving, that's the alpha. There exists some spot, that's the K, such that from that spot on, the terms of the sequence are bigger than alpha. So this means that if you tend towards infinity, no matter what number's given to you, you get bigger than that number. Not only do you get bigger than that number, you stay bigger. At some point, you get bigger, and at some point, you get bigger and stay bigger. You never get below that. Is that okay? Well, look, we got that. Well, to have something about X sub n tends to minus infinity. That'll be next, isn't it, Dennis?
Yes, sir.
Boy, you know what? What does this thing? Well, it's very similar. A sequence, X sub n, tends to minus infinity. If for each eps, if for each alpha element of R, I call it alpha again, if for each real number you can give me, there exists a K element of the natural number, such that for all N bigger than or equal to K, and we're going to minus infinity. So X sub n will be less than alpha. So what is this saying? This is saying, no matter what number you give me, we tend towards minus infinity. There's a spot in the sequence called K. Such that from that spot on, all the terms of the sequence are less than the number you gave me. Because we're going to minus infinity. We're getting really low. We get smaller than any particular number you give me. Is that okay with everybody? Audrey, would you like to start us off with a definition?
A sequence, X sub n, tends to minus infinity for each alpha element of the reals, there exists a K element of the natural numbers such that for all N bigger than or equal to K, X sub n is less than alpha.
Less than alpha. Because we're going towards, if we're going towards infinity, we have to be
Greater than.
That's right. Megan, do you want to say it?
Given a sequence, X sub n, tends to minus infinity if for each alpha element of the reals, there exists a K element of natural numbers such that for all N greater than or equal to K, X sub n is less than alpha.
That's fantastic. Mariah, would you say it?
A sequence, X sub n, tends to minus infinity if for each alpha exists N element real numbers, there exists a K element of natural numbers such that for all N bigger than or equal to K, X sub n is less than alpha.
That's right. How about it, John? Will you say it?
A sequence, X sub n, tends toward minus infinity if for each alpha element of R, there exists a K element of the natural numbers such that for all N bigger than or equal to K, X sub n is less than alpha.
Right. Davin, you will say it?
A sequence, X sub n, tends towards minus infinity if for for every alpha element of the real numbers, there exists a K element of the natural numbers such that for all N greater than K, greater than or equal to K.
Yes. You just said greater than.
Greater than or equal to K, X sub n is less than alpha.
That's right. That's correct. Good. There's a word, a phrase, that's not on your study guide, so I'm not going to ask you. But you know, here, how we had monotone sequence that incorporated these two things? There was a phrase that we had for these combinations. One of these things happened, at least one of these things happened. Does anybody remember what it was called?
Properly divergent.
That's what it was. So a sequence is said to be properly divergent if it tends to infinity, or tends to minus infinity. That's right. So that's, that was a word that was out there. It's like monotone. Monotone sequence is a sequence that's either increasing or decreasing. A properly divergent sequence is a sequence that tends to either infinity or a sequence that tends to minus infinity. That's what it is. So I'm not going to ask you that, but that was a definition we had. I must have forgotten about it. I hear people out there go, "Whoo, I'm glad you forgot." And then I'm forgotten. What's the, forgot to say? Hey. Cluster point. Okay. So first of all, I want to tell you that the first seven definitions have to do with sequences. Okay? They have to do with sequences. Why don't we take a second? And why don't we each say one of them? Make sure we can say, listen, everybody can say it. Davin, can you say the first one? Don't look at me. Wait a minute. What does it mean to be an increasing sequence?
I have a, a, a sequence.
What's going to call a sequence?
X sub n.
All right. Sequence, X sub n.
Is said to be increasing if for all N element of natural numbers.
What's it mean?
Oh, okay. Correct. For every N element of natural numbers, X sub n is less than or equal to X sub n plus one.
You?
That's correct.
John looks a little bit decreasing.
A sequence, X sub n, is said to be a decreasing sequence if for all N element of the natural numbers, X sub n is bigger than or equal to X sub n plus one.
That's right. What's Audrey mean to be a monotone sequence? Oh, you've got something.
A monotone sequence, X sub n, is a sequence that is either increasing or decreasing.
What about it, Mariah? What's a subsequence?
I knew I was going to have this one. A sequence, X sub n.
Given a sequence.
Given a sequence, X sub n.
And?
And epsilon?
No.
No. And a strictly, oh, no. A strictly increasing sequence of natural numbers where N sub one is less than N sub two, all the way to N sub K, and so on. Then X sub N sub K is a subsequence of X sub n.
That's right. Okay, Megan, what does it mean to be a Cauchy sequence? But wait, Megan, you've got the words. Go ahead. What is a Cauchy sequence?
A Cauchy sequence is a sequence, X sub n, such that for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a K element of the natural numbers such that for all N and N greater than or equal to K, the absolute value of X sub n minus X sub n is epsilon.
I think she said it correctly. John, what does it mean for a sequence to tend towards infinity?
We say a sequence, X sub n, tends toward positive infinity if for each alpha element of R, there exists a K element of the natural numbers such that for all N bigger than or equal to K, X sub n is greater than alpha.
To tend towards infinity.
Infinity, that's right.
What does it mean, Megan, to tend towards minus infinity?
A sequence x of n tends to minus infinity for each alpha element of the real numbers, there exists a k element of the natural numbers such that for all n greater than or equal to k, x of n is less than alpha.
That's right, less than alpha. Is that okay with everybody? This is seven out of eleven, that's a substantial proportion, okay? Listen, your definitions are gonna constitute twenty points for your test. Okay? Yes, maybe, uh, no, it'll be five probably, each one four points each. My goodness, that's pretty good. It's alright. If you could get those twenty points, I mean, you know, I know they sound silly, but to get a good grade, don't miss twenty points. Does that make sense? So might as well get the twenty points. If you start off twenty out of twenty, it's not, it's not, uh, it's hard to do very poorly with tests. If you start off twenty out of twenty, that, that's a good start, okay? Alright, uh, one of the things before we go on to cluster points, now I'm gonna emphasize, is that these first definitions, as we said earlier, are about sequences. And every time we're talking about sequence, there's this k. There's this k, why are we talking about k? Where is k? K is, uh, it's a spot in the sequence, it's a spot in the sequence, that's right, Audrey. It, but we say in the definition, k is an element of what, David? Natural numbers. Do you know why we say this? We say this because of the following. What is the domain for a, what is a sequence? A sequence is a function whose domain is? The set of natural numbers. So we're saying, when you say a spot in the sequence, what you're saying is there's a spot in its domain. Says that from that spot on, okay? We have something. Alright, what's a cluster point? Okay, cluster point doesn't have to do with the sequence necessarily. What's a cluster point? Well, to talk about a cluster point, you talk about a cluster point of a set, so you gotta have a set. So you say, let A be a subset of real numbers. Then C is a cluster point. Let A be a subset of real numbers. Then C is a, C element of R, is a cluster point. It's a cluster point of A. If for each delta greater than zero, could be epsilon, but this time I say delta. For each delta greater than zero, there exists an x element of A, so there's something in A that is different from C, so x is different than C. And the absolute value of x minus C is less than delta. What this means is, is the following. For C to be a cluster point for the set A, means there's something from that A right up next to C. Besides C itself.
Would it be okay on the test if we'd say, um, an x in A with zero less than absolute value of x minus C, less than delta? Since that includes x being different from C?
You wouldn't, you would've said something correct.
Okay.
Yes, I could not count off, it's not exactly our definition, but it's a good part of our definition, yes. So you said if x is, uh, if there exists an x element of A, such that zero is less than the absolute value of x minus C is less than delta, yes. Yeah, that's the same. Okay, cluster point, Megan, will you say it for us?
Given a set A, such that x is a cluster point of A, if for each delta greater than zero, there exists an x element of A with x and c being different from each other, and the absolute value of x minus c is less than delta.
That's right. John, you wanna try?
Let A be a subset of R and let c be an element of R. We say c is a cluster point of A if for each delta greater than zero, there exists an x in A with x different from c and the absolute value of x minus c less than delta.
That's right. David, will you say it?
Let A be a subset of R and x be an element of R. C is a cluster point if for each delta greater than zero, there exists there exists an x element of A with x being different from c such that the absolute value of x minus c is less than delta.
Delta's right. And, uh, one of the things that helped remind me of these things, everybody? Everybody. Is, you start off like this, you say, well, A is a subset of R, c is an element of A, then c is a cluster point of A, okay? If for each delta, so I mentioned delta, I better be using it somewhere later. For each delta greater than zero, there exists an x, where's, what about x? X is in A and is different from? C. And I haven't mentioned delta. Such that the absolute value of x minus c has to be less than delta. So delta's still, I mean, why the heck, we're talking about delta? You know, hey, don't forget about that person over there, and we never talked about that person. That'd be bad. Excuse me? Yes, I did. That's a cluster point, is that okay with everybody? Mariah, did you say it?
Nope.
Okay, will you say it?
Yep, let A be a subset of R and c be an element of R. C is said to be a cluster point of A if for each delta greater than zero, there exists an x element of A with x being different than c and the absolute value of x minus c being less than delta.
That's right, that is right. That's good, okay. That's a cluster point, I think we got nine out of ten, eleven, three more definitions. I'm sure you guys worked on it beforehand, okay, but it's still good, you can, you can say, well, got it. Okay, so, uh, the next definition is a limit of a function. So, first of all, we gotta have some setup. So the setup is the following, we say, we let A be a subset of R, one time that I don't remember. But you let A be a subset of R. You let f be a function from A to R. And you let c be a cluster point of A. Then we say f has limit L. Where L's a real number. We say f has limit L at c, and right, when this x goes to c, if f x equals L. If, alright, here it comes, it's all about the setup. Here it is, if for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero, such that for all x in A, the domain, with zero being less than x minus c being less than delta, then the absolute value of f of x minus L, not f of c, L, is gonna be less than epsilon. I'm gonna say it. You said it a couple times. Set of R. So the setup is, A is a subset of R, f goes from A to R, and c's a cluster point of A. Then we say f has limit L at c, where L is a real number, okay? F has limit L at c. Written, limits x goes to c, if f x equals L. If for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero, such that for all x in A with zero less than x minus c inside the value, less than delta. I'm gonna say the absolute value, I'm gonna show it. Then, the absolute value of f of x minus L, absolute value of f of x minus L will be less than epsilon. Let's give everybody a second. The f of x minus L inside absolute values will be less than epsilon, said that you can force, you can force the output values to be as close as you want to L for all the input values that are very, very close to c but not equal to c that are in the domain of the function. That's what we say for all x element of A. We only can be talking about guys that are in the domain of the function to have output values for them. But we're only gonna talk about the ones that are really close to c, that are equal to certain functions. Audrey, can you say what it means to be a cluster point?
Given a set A, which is a subset of real numbers, um, the number c is a cluster point of A if for each, um, delta?
Yeah, that's what we usually use here, yeah.
Okay, greater than, uh, zero, there exists a, I mean, sorry.
There exists a?
X element of A, um.
What about that is?
It can't be equal to c.
Alright, whatever.
So if x, um, not equal to c, um, then the absolute value of, um, x minus c is less than delta.
I wouldn't say then, I would say and, or where.
Okay, alright.
So to be a cluster point, that means there's gotta be this x that's within delta units of c from A. There's gotta be this x from A, that's not c, and within delta units of c, whatever delta you gave me. You say, you say, we need, no matter what number you give me, there's something from A within that distance of c that's different than c. That's what it means, yeah. So to be a cluster point, you, you gotta be a point that's right up next to things from A. Does that make sense? Alright, what's the limit of a function? What about, Megan?
Let A be a subset of real numbers, f is a function from A to the real numbers, and c be a cluster point of A. Then we say f has limit L at c, and then, divided by one, if x goes to c, if f of x is equal to L. If for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero, such that for all x element of A with the value less than the absolute value of x minus c less than delta, then the absolute value of f of x minus L is less than epsilon.
I see it. It's not easy. John, can you say it?
Sure. Let A be a subset of R, let f be a function that goes from A to R, and let c be a cluster point of A. We say f has limit L at c if for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero such that for all x in A with zero less than absolute value of x minus c less than delta, then the absolute value of f of x minus L is less than epsilon.
That's right. Audrey, can you say it?
Let A be a subset of R, let function f go from A to R, and let c be a cluster point of A. We say f has limit L at c divided by the limit, as I said, goes to c, if f x equals L. If there exists, if for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero such that for all x element of A with zero less than the absolute value of x minus c less than delta, then the absolute value of f of x minus L is less than epsilon.
That's right, that's only the other time we mentioned epsilon, that thirteen, that's right. Mariah, you will give the shot.
Let A be a subset of R and f be a function that goes from A to R, and c be a cluster point of A. F has limit L at c if for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero such that for all x element of A, zero.
Where?
With zero is less than the absolute value of x minus c is less than delta, then the absolute value of f of x minus L is less than epsilon.
That's right. David, will you give the shot?
Let A be a subset of R, f go from A to R, and c be a cluster point of A. We say, uh, f has a limit at c. Divided by, I mean, this x approaches c, if f of x equals L. If for, for all epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero such that for all x element of A with x not equal to c.
We don't say that part.
Okay, sorry, uh, so for all.
We imply that, though, okay? So we imply it this way, so with all, for all x element of A, where?
With zero less than the absolute value of x minus c less than, uh, delta. Uh, and, then, then, sorry. The absolute value of f of x minus L is less than epsilon.
That's right. So, I wanna say something about these words. Where, the word where means and, this is happening here, with, with this constraint, okay? We're just looking to be part of it. But, when we say, uh, the x is element of A with zero less than the absolute value of x minus c less than delta. So we just talk, just for those input values, the ones that are in A, those are the input values, that are close to c but not equal to c. How do we say they're not equal to c? It's the zero is less than the absolute value of x minus c. That's what's saying x is not c. Because if x were c, the absolute value of x minus c would be zero, but we're saying a, we don't want that. We want zero to be less than this number, this absolute value, so that means x is equal to c. And less than delta, then, so when you do that, it's gonna forge something. It's gonna make the absolute value of f of x minus L be less than epsilon. We see, we got pictures on board, we need to graph it. Okay, I think that's good, I think people said it, that's good. And, and that's gonna be very similar to another definition, well, we got ten more to go. Well, maybe I misspoke, then we got a few more. So here's, uh, ten, I misspoke, and twelve. F is bounded on some neighborhood of C. Okay, so I need to say it. The last two are not so bad, I don't think. This one, for me, I'm gonna tell all of them, not that it's important, for me, this is one of the harder definitions. I don't use it very often, and it's just not so easy. So the set, that A be a subset of R, f go from A to R, and again, we're talking about c being a cluster point, that's the setup. We say that f is bounded on some neighborhood of C if there exists a delta neighborhood of C. Such that for all x element of A intersect V sub delta of C, that delta neighborhood. So what, what kind of x are we talking about? We're talking about guys that are in the domain, that are also in that delta neighborhood. I messed up, okay? Alright, so, uh, here we have to back up. So A is a subset of R, f goes from A to R, c's a cluster point. We say that f is bounded on some neighborhood of C if there exists a delta neighborhood of C and an m greater than zero. Such that for all x element of A intersect that delta neighborhood, V sub B of C. For all those x's, the absolute value of f of x will be less than or equal to m. So I, I'm gonna say something about m, Mariah, at the end, when I said, oh, I messed up, because I didn't introduce you. So I knew, I was like, all of a sudden, hey, you know, uh, you know, we talk blah, 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 we talk, we talk, and all of a sudden, oh, here's somebody. Who is, who is that, what is that, you know? So we gotta introduce you, okay? And so I hadn't introduced you, so I'm gonna say it. We say let f be, A be a subset of R. F goes from A to R, and c is a cluster point. What do we define? Then, f is said to be bounded on some neighborhood, on some neighborhood, we're not saying for all neighborhoods, on some neighborhood of C. If there exists a delta neighborhood of C, V sub delta of C, and an m greater than zero. So some real numbers bigger than zero. Such that for all x element of A intersect V sub delta of C, then, if you want, the absolute value of f of x will be less than or equal to, you know? And I see it, I'm done with that definition. I wanna tell you that not all functions are bounded on some neighborhood of C. One over x is not bounded on some neighborhood of zero, okay? So here, when I said one over x is not bounded on some neighborhood of zero, here's my picture. One over x is like this. Anytime you get some little neighborhood of zero, you look at the output values of f of x, they're shooting off to infinity from the right, they're going to minus of it to left, it doesn't matter. The fact that they're shooting off from infinity to the right, you know, or just the fact that they're shooting off to minus infinity to the left. The fact that they're shooting off from infinity to the right, you know, or just the fact that they're shooting off to minus infinity to the left. Uh, either one of those is enough to say that the function isn't bounded on any neighborhood. So, no matter what neighborhood you give me, hey, you're over here, no, no matter what neighborhood zero you're giving me, over here, this function is going off to infinity, it's getting bigger than you think you're giving me, no matter what you give me, I'm gonna get bigger than it without the barriers. You give me this m, oh, no, we gotta bigger than that. And you said, well, wait a minute, let me make, maybe I make my delta smaller. Yeah, but if you make your delta smaller, you still, over that little region, you're getting bigger than m.
You take out the smallest terms when you do that.
Yeah. Yeah, this one, you make the delta this way. So, it's not bounded, but lots of functions are. Ones where the limits exist are bounded on some neighborhood. Okay. Can you perhaps say it?
I think I can.
Alright, John, let's see, here you say it.
Let A be a subset of R, let f go from A to R and let c be a cluster point of A. We say function f is bounded on some neighborhood of C if there exists a delta neighborhood of C and m greater than zero such that for all x in A intersect V sub delta of C, the absolute value of f of x is less than or equal to m.
You don't have to say the word then, you said everything fine. I say the word then, sometimes, but that's what's being implied by the comma is there, uh, in between. X being the element of A intersect V sub delta of C, comma, f of x inside of the basis. Yeah, that's right. Dalvin, you think you guys tried it different?
Let A be a subset of R, f goes from A to R and c be a cluster point of A. We say f is bounded on some neighborhood of C.
Neighborhood of C.
If there exists a delta neighborhood.
Of C.
Of C.
And.
And m greater than zero.
So, it's gotta be two things. You gotta have this delta neighborhood and you gotta have n.
Yeah.
You know, okay. So, it's a what?
Such that for all x element of A.
A.
A intersect the V sub delta.
Of C, that's the delta neighborhood of C.
Of C, uh, the absolute value of f of x is less than m.
Less than or equal to.
Less than.
Megan, can you say it?
Let A be a subset of R and f goes from A to the real numbers and c be a cluster point of A. We say f is bounded on some neighborhood of C if there exists a delta neighborhood of C and a constant m greater than zero such that for all x element of A intersect V sub delta of C, the absolute value of f of x is less than or equal to m.
I think you said it, okay. What about Mariah?
Let A be a subset of R and f go from A to R and c be a cluster point of A. f is said to be bounded on some neighborhood of C if there exists a delta neighborhood of C and an m greater than, or equal to zero such that for all x in A intersect the, um, V, the delta neighborhood of C, then absolute value of f of x is less than or equal to m.
That's right. Audrey?
Let A be a subset of R, f go from A to R and c be a cluster point of A. We say that f is bounded on some neighborhood of C if there exists a delta neighborhood of C and a constant m greater than zero such that the absolute value of f of x is less than or equal to m for all x, um, element of A intersect V sub delta of C.
That's right. That's right. Is that okay? Okay. The next two definitions are still available in my opinion because one of them is very close to continuity. I mean, very close to continuity because it is continuity. Very close to the limits of functions are continuity. At C. Okay. So, what does it mean for a function to be continuous at C? So, here, there's a little bit of room for, there's some difference between, there's a little bit of room for confusion because there's some differences between limits of a function and continuity. So, first of all, there's differences in the setup. We say let A be a subset of R. We say let f go from A to R and we say let c be a, no, not a cluster point. We just say let c be an element of A. Then, f is said to be continuous at C. f is said to be continuous at C. If for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta. Such that for all x element of A with the absolute value of x minus c being less than delta, then the absolute value of f of x minus f of C will be less than epsilon. Not L. C's not a cluster point. C, to be continuous at a, at a spot, you gotta be in the domain. The, the spot's gotta be in the domain, the point's gotta be in the domain, the c has to be in the domain. You be a cluster point, not be in the.
Domain.
Domain. You don't have to be in A to be a cluster point. I mean, nine was a cluster point of that last example in homework that we had, but he wouldn't be in A. I gave him a problem about it. I'm gonna say it again. I'm trying to. F, I'm sorry, A is a subset of R, f goes from A to R, c's element of A. We say f is continuous at A. Continuous at C. Continuous at C. f is continuous at C if for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero. Such that for all x in A with absolute value of x minus c being less than delta, then absolute value of f of x minus f of c is less than epsilon. Remember, you got epsions and deltas, they're gonna play something, some role in the definition. Mariah, you wanna try it first?
Sure. Let A be a subset of R and f go from A to R, let c be an element of A. Then, f is said to be continuous at c if each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero for all x in A with the absolute value of x minus c being less than delta. Then, the absolute value of f of x minus f of c is less than epsilon.
I would say the phrase such that in there. When I had a teacher, Mariah and everybody else in the room, Dr. Gable, and she used to say this phrase a lot when she taught. Such that, I didn't understand that wasn't her pet phrase. That's what the definition said. You read the definition, you look at the book as it says that. You're thinking, why does this lady say such that all the time? I used to think it was something about her. It wasn't. It's the math, this is. Megan, can you say what it means for f to be continuous at C?
Let A be a subset of the real numbers, f goes from A to the real numbers and c is an element of A. We say f is continuous at C if for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero such that for all x element of A with the absolute value of x minus c less than delta and the absolute value of f of x minus c is less than epsilon.
That's right. Audrey, can you tell what it means to be a limit of a function?
Let A be a subset of R, right, f go from A to R and c be a cluster point of A. We say, um.
F has.
f has limit L at c and denote this by writing the limit as x goes to c of f of x equals to L. If, um.
For each epsilon.
For epsilon greater than zero, there exists a.
Delta.
Delta greater than zero such that for all x in A, uh, with. Is it x is not equal to c or is it zero?
No, with zero.
Zero is less than the absolute value of x minus c is less than delta. Um, then, the absolute value of f of x minus, uh, L is less than epsilon.
That's good. That's right. John, can you say what it means to be continuous at C?
Let A be a subset of R, let f go from A to R and let c be an element of A. We say f is continuous at C if for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero such that for all x in A, the absolute value of x minus, correct, with the absolute value of x minus c less than delta, then the absolute value of f of x minus f of c is less than epsilon.
Dalvin, can you say what it means to be continuous?
Let A be a subset of R, f go from A to R and c be an element of A. f is said to be continuous at C if for all epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero such that for all x element of A with, with the absolute value of x minus c is less than delta, then the absolute value of f of x minus f of c is less than epsilon.
That's right. Look, the x's are inputs and so is the c. So, you're gonna have x's and c's inside absolute values. The output values are f of x's and f of c's, so they're together. So, maybe that helps you remember, okay? Mariah, did you say it?
Yep.
John, did you say it?
Yes, sir.
Dalvin, I know you said it. Audrey, did you say it?
No, you said limit. You didn't say the right thing.
What's it mean to be continuous at C, Audrey?
Let A be a subset of R, f go from A to R and c be an element of A. Um, we say f is continuous at C if for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a delta greater than zero such that for all x in A, um, with the absolute value of x minus c less than delta, then the absolute value of f of x minus f of c is less than epsilon.
That's right. It's three of you. Is that okay with everybody? Megan, you said it? Okay. Well, there's one more definition left. And that definition is for continuity on a set. So, what's it mean to be continued, for a function to be continuous on a set? So, here's what I would say. Here's the exact definition. It says, let A be a subset of R, let f go from A to R, that's the set, and let B be a subset of A. Then, we say f is continuous on B. f is continuous on B if f is continuous for all c element of B. So, what's it mean to be continuous on a set? You're continuous at each point in the set? That's what it means. Now, a lot of times in our definitions or our theorems, uh, our theorems, I should say, we'd say, you know, let f be continuous on A or something like that. So, we'd say f be continuous on its domain. Is that okay? But here, it doesn't have to be continuous on its domain. We're continuous on a subset of its domain. Does that make sense? That's what we're talking about. So, that's when we have this B subset of A. Okay. Alright, well, uh, here's what I'd like. I'd like for it to go this way. Dalvin, John, Mariah, Audrey, Megan, I'm gonna go get something, Mariah. Go ahead, start saying it. What's it mean to be continuous at C? Say it, Mariah, say it, break each other. Move it.
Let A be a subset of R, f go from A to R and B be a subset of A. Then, f is continuous on B if f is continuous at all c element of B.
Got it. Let f go from A to R where A is a subset of R and let B be a subset of A. We say f is continuous on the set B if f is continuous at each c that's an element of B.
Let A be a subset of R and f go from A to R and let B be a subset of A. f is continuous on B if f is continuous at all c in B.
Let A be a subset of R, f go from A to R. And B be a subset of A. We say f is continuous on B if f is continuous for all c. Did I get it right?
Yes.
Yes.
Let A be a subset of the real numbers and f go from A to R and B is a subset of A. We say f is continuous on B if f is continuous for all c element of B.
You win.
Quick, John, what's it mean to be Cauchy?
Sequence x of n is said to be a Cauchy sequence if for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists a k element of the natural numbers such that for all m and n bigger than or equal to k, the absolute value of x of n minus x of m is less than epsilon. Audrey, what's it mean for, what's a subsequence?
Uh, given a sequence x of n and a strictly increasing sequence of natural numbers, n sub 1 is less than n sub 2 and forever, then, um, x of n sub k is said to be a subsequence of x's. Did I get it?
I think you did.
Oh, my God, I'm burning up.
Don't we go?
Yep.
Okay. I'm upset. I put two dollars in one of these vending machines. I was gonna get water. I was gonna get water, I knew it was shopping.
It was all sold out one night.
It was all sold out. And so, I pressed Mountain Dew and it was sold out. And then I had to get Diet Mountain Dew.
That means I must've got the last Mountain Dew.
Obviously, it was so damn funny. Oh. Oh, that's not very nice. In one of my classes, uh, the other day, so we'll take just a second, right? One of my classes the other day, the funny things happen all the time when you're in a record, okay? Things happen in a record. I don't think I've told you this story, but, uh, maybe I have. But if I have, please, just be polite. So, that's why. Glad you told us, I've told twenty times. So, in one of my classes, I was talking about being partially Greek. So, we were talking about standard deviation. So, I wrote down, uh, what represents standard deviation? C. I said, C, that's what it looks like. So, one person said, I don't believe I can even write that, I think we'll be practicing, that's what it looks like. Anyway, that's it. And, uh, I said, I'm part Greek, so I can write this kind of easily because I have some background. I said, there's a person here on campus who's full-blooded Greek. Stimianos Hagianis, that's the way you say his name in Greek, Dr. Hagianis. And he's a political scientist. He's full-blooded Greek. And then, there's someone who's sort of like me, who is half-Greek. So, my mom's Greek. And someone else who fell into the, uh, kind of into this half-Greek category is Professor Neil Carpathia. That's what I said. And my mom used to say, oh, he's my favorite professor, to which I quickly dismissed. I'm so glad to hear that. I mean, I'm not, you know. Well, that's okay, I'm, I'm my favorite professor. I said enough for that. Don't bother anybody, we're all allowed to have who we like and don't like next to it. Alright, we're done with, uh, the definitions? We're good?
Yep.
Okay. Next thing I've worked on is stating the, uh, the, the theorem. So, I've worked on it and then I get to the definition, I mean, the, the proofs. Okay. So, if we could say those definitions through once, if we could say all the named theorems, that's the number fifteen, so we're talking thirty-five. I know it doesn't sound like much, but if you can't say them and you lose thirty-five?
That's not good.
That's not good. You're talking about really, really struggling to pass. Does that make sense? So, it isn't like, oh, you passed, it's that you don't fail to start off with. Being able to say these things to at least put us in footing where we're not in bad conditions to start off with. Alright, so, being able to say the squeeze theorem for functions, oh, man. Squeeze theorem for functions, that, that, I don't think that's easy. So, let's start writing them. Squeeze theorem for functions. So, what's the squeeze theorem for functions? Uh, the squeeze theorem for functions says, follow, I need to look at this, I'm struggling. My eyesight's very poor. Okay. So, the squeeze theorem for functions, what does it say? It has a setup. What's the setup? You're gonna let f, um, g and h be functions that go from A to R. So, you can start off by saying, let A be a subset of R. Let f, g and h go from A to R. And I didn't even write down what we're talking about. And I didn't even write down what we're talking about properly. Is the squeeze theorem for, or less? For function limits. For limits of functions, function limits. A being, A be a subset of R. A's a subset of R. F, G, and H go from A to R with C being a cluster point, because we're talking about limits. Okay, so C is a cluster point. Also let F of X be less than or equal to G of X, be less than or equal to H of X. So G of X is the middle. For all X element of A except X equal to C. So they make that one provision. You don't have to have it, uh, that inequalities for X equal to C. We don't care what happens at C. If the limit as X goes to C, uh, smaller function, F of X, equals to some number, let's say W. Doesn't matter, hell, whatever it said. I think we said W in class. W, which equals to the limit as X goes to C of the bigger function, which was H. Then, the limit as X goes to C of the middle function, which was G, is equal to W. Is that okay with everybody? And if you use a different ladder for size W, the most natural thing for us to use the size W is L, because that's what we've been talking about, L. So if you wanna use L, that's okay. Is that all right for everybody? I'm gonna say it again. It's got a setup. It's got some preliminaries you gotta say. You've got, let A be a subset of R. F, G, and H, they go from A to R with F of X being less than or equal to G of X, being less than or equal to H of X. For all X element of A except X equal to C. I forgot something. C is a cluster point. C's a cluster point. Then, all right, what should I say? If the limit as X goes to C of F of X is equal to W, which equals to the limit as X goes to C of H of X, then the limit as X goes to C of G of X, the middle function, is equal to W. John, can you say it?
Let A be a subset of R, let F, G, and H go from A to R, and let C be a cluster point of A. Suppose F of X is less than or equal to G of X, is less than or equal to H of X for all X in A, uh, with X different from C. If the limit as X goes to C of F of X is equal to theta sub 2 double prime is equal to,
I'm losing.
Limit as X goes to C of H of X, then the limit as X goes to C of G of X is equal to theta sub 2. I don't know why.
Okay, you picked it. It's good enough. Okay, just to be in good sense, I think. All right. John, sometimes I'm just not surprised. Can you say it?
Let A be a subset of R, let some things, F, G, and H go from A to R, and let C be a cluster point of A. Suppose F of X is less than or equal to G of X, is less than or equal to H of X for all X in A, and that X is not equal to C. If the limit as X goes to C of F of X equals L and also equals the limit as X goes to C of H of X, then the limit as X goes to C of G of X also equals L.
Yeah, I think you can say it.
Let A be a subset of R, uh, F, G, and H go from A to R, and C be a cluster point of A. Let F of X be less than or equal to G of X, less than or equal to H of X for all X element of A except X equals C. If the limit as X approaches C of of F of X equals W, which equals the limit as X approaches C of H of X, then the limit as X approaches C of G of X equals W.
It's perfect. Can you say it, Mariah?
Let A be a subset of R, and functions F, G, and H go from A to R, and C be a cluster point of A. Let F of X be less than or equal to G of X, be less than or equal to H of X with all X in A with X being different than C. If the limit as X goes to C of F of X is equal to W and is also equal to the limit of X goes to C of H of X, then the limit as X goes to C of G of X is equal to W.
I didn't pay attention. L of X is less than G of X is less than H of X for all X.
Okay.
With?
F being different than B.
That's okay. Did you, I didn't know. Did you say it?
I think I did, but.
I didn't pay any attention. Megan? I'm sorry, I didn't pay any attention.
Let A be a subset of R, numbers, F, G, and H go from A to R, and C be a cluster point of A. Suppose F of X is less than or equal to G of X, is less than or equal to H of X for all X element of A, and X and C being different from each other. If the limit as X goes to C of F of X is equal to L, which is equal to the limit as X goes to C of H of X, then the limit as X goes to C of G of X is equal to L.
Sounds right. I think everybody got a chance to say it. Is that correct? Audrey, did you say it? The, so that's the first one. The second one is the monotone convergence theorem. Okay, the monotone convergence theorem. So, um, let's write that on the board. So what's the monotone convergence theorem? The monotone convergence theorem says a monotone sequence, it was by sequence. A monotone sequence converges if and only if it is bounded. And it can, if you write that, that's correct. But it says more than that. Moreover.
Use one of these good words.
Moreover, if X of N is a bounded increasing sequence. Okay, so not only monotonic, they tell you what kind of monotonic it is, sequence. Then, um, X of N converges to the supremum of X of N. And, or, if X of N is a bounded decreasing sequence, then X of N converges to the infimum of X of N. So that moreover, really isn't needed. But I tell you, it is. It tells you how to do the proof. Or at least part of the proof. And wait a minute, wait to say it. So what does it say? A monotone sequence is convergent if and only if it is bounded. And we know that if you're convergent, you're automatically bounded. So half the proof is, you know, stating something we've already done. And it's the other half where the moreover comes into play in terms of the proof. This isn't one of the proofs we have. No, it's not. Not for this, uh, test. But if you look on the final exam, look at that. So when I look at the final exam, it said, I will ask you at least four of the following. Number three is the monotone convergence theorem. Isn't that nice? I suppose nice is one on the board. Monotone convergence theorem, here's what it says. It says a monotone conver, a, a monotone sequence converges if and only if it is bounded. Moreover, if X of N is a bounded increasing sequence, then X of N converges to its supremum. If X of N is a bounded decreasing sequence, then it converges to its infimum. Dalvin, do you think you can say it?
A monotone sequence converges if and only if it is bounded. Moreover, if it is a increased, if X of N is an increasing, is a bounded increasing sequence, it converges to its supremum. And if it is a bounded decreasing sequence, it converges to its infimum.
That's right. What's nice about this, you know, sequences that converge can bounce around. They can bounce around and go to the spot that they're converging to. But these monotone sequences, they don't bounce around. They go directly towards it. They're increasing towards it if they converge, or they're decreasing towards it, because they're monotonic. What about it, Megan? Can you say the monotone convergence theorem?
A monotone sequence converges if and only if it is bounded. Moreover, if X of N is increasing and bounded, then X of N converges to its supremum. And if X of N is decreasing and bounded, then X of N converges to its infimum.
That's right. Audrey, can you say it?
Monotone sequence converges if and only if it is bounded. Moreover, if X of N is increasing and bounded, then X of N converges to its supremum. If X of N is decreasing and bounded, then X of N converges to its infimum.
Mariah, can you give me what the definition of the limit of a function is?
Nope.
Okay. Can you tell me what it means, what the monotone convergence theorem says?
Sure. A monotone sequence converges if and only if it is bounded. Moreover, if it is bounded and increasing, it converges to the supremum. Supremum, and if it is bounded and increasing, it converges to the infimum.
That's right. John, can you tell me what the monotone convergence theorem?
A sequence X of N, a monotone sequence X of N is convergent if and only if it is bounded. Moreover, if X of N is bounded and increasing, it converges to the supremum of the X of Ns. If X of N is bounded and decreasing, it converges to the infimum of the X of Ns.
Dalvin, can you tell me what it means for a sequence to tend to infinity?
A sequence.
A sequence X of N.
A sequence X of N.
It's good though. Ah, don't worry about it. Wait, wait, wait.
Okay, I got it, I got it.
Yeah.
I didn't see it yet.
I don't believe you.
I didn't see it yet. Okay, no, this, this is the alpha one.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. One of that goes up there, so. A sequence X of N tends to infinity if for each, for each alpha element of the reals, there exists a K element of the natural numbers such that for every K greater than K, X of N or, is it X of N?
X of N.
X of N.
That's right. It is not for all N bigger than K. It's for all N bigger than or equal. That's what it says. But bigger than is good enough, but that's what it says. Mariah, what's the limit? Can you do it?
I have.
Limit of a function. What's the setup?
Let A be a subset of R, and F be functions in A R.
Wait just a second. What are you going to write?
The limit as X goes to C.
So you've gotta be talking about some of this.
F of X equals L.
So, so that's right. Okay, so you said, what comes next? Look with those symbols in your mind, what you just said. You talked about F, those made of R. What haven't you talked about since then?
L.
That's true. What else?
And C.
That's what's next.
C a cluster point?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's the setup. Now we're going to what we're talking about. What are we talking about? We say.
We say the limit of F.
At?
At C.
Is?
Is L, denoted by what I said. For.
If.
If.
For.
X can't be C.
That's true. It's for each?
For each delta.
No, I mean, epsilon.
Epsilon greater than zero. Absolute value.
For each epsilon greater than zero, there exists?
A delta.
Greater than zero. Says that?
Says that the absolute value.
Says that for all X in?
A.
With?
Absolute value.
Of?
X minus C is less than or equal to delta. Then, the absolute value of F of X minus L is less than epsilon.
Almost. It's for all X in A with?
X being different than C.
That's right. How do we indicate that in this definition?
Zero.
Is less than?
Less than absolute value of X minus C is less than.
Okay, so I'm gonna tell you, sometimes on the test, maybe you'll, you'll see something else that reminds you of the definition. So let the test also be a, kind of a stimulator of, of what some of the answers that you give are. That can act. I'm gonna ask you to use the definition of a limit of a function to prove that a certain limit of a, of a particular function is equal to this number. I'm gonna ask you. And we'll, well, we all know how to do it. You let those first, let epsilon greater than zero be given. What are we looking for? A delta when we talk about the limit. Is that okay? So you know it's gonna have, the definition's gonna have epsilon's in. Yeah, so that helps. Excuse me?
And that's only changing if the, as well as being on a day, don't put real numbers.
No, it depends on what the function that you're given is. So if the domain is real numbers, that's why we put real numbers. If A is R, that's what we do. And every example I've done has A being R. But it's supposed to be A. That's what it's supposed to be. Is that okay with everybody? We're okay with monotone convergence theorem? Is that okay? I wanna tell you all, and I, I, I'm not trying to say anything, okay? I'm trying to say something positive. It's easy. I'm a person. It's easy to recognize the way others handle things. What we're facing. It's not, now, what we're facing is something difficult. It's not. It's hard to remember all these definitions. It's hard to string them together and prove things. If it was easy, everybody'd be taking the class. You know, you don't see this as a general ledge in class. Boy, I can't wait to get my laptop and run one out by doing this class. That didn't happen. It's hard. What we also see, okay, from each other, it's not easy to remember these definitions. And we can say them at some point, and can't say them in others. Because we need practice. So don't come in cold when I mean by, you know, oh, I, I said them last, uh, two days ago. I ought to be able to say them, you know, for Lindsay. Uh-uh. Megan is, okay, let, let me use somebody in here who has done their senior research project. Completed their senior research project. There's only one person who's completed their senior research project. That's John. John, how many times have we practiced your senior research project?
Maybe half a dozen times.
Okay. Megan, how many times have we done it? That's what I think. Okay, so John, I'm not so sure that we did, did it just half a dozen.
It might've been, it might've been more than that.
Pretty sure it was, but I'm not positive.
It might've been eight or nine times.
But I want to say, we repeat. And just because John did it fine one time, I didn't say, oh, that's it, you got it. It's, let's do it again. There was this student, I'll just tell you just specific, Molly Gillen. And Molly and I, I don't know if anybody knows who she is. Anybody know who she is?
I know of her.
Molly did a very good senior research project, and we worked together on it. Not all my senior research projects, John, yours was good. Not, not everybody's senior research project's good. But I'm talking about me. I don't have to go to somebody over there's senior research project. I know mine, the one I work, they're not all good. Okay? I've had somebody say, oh, gosh, I didn't do a good job helping this student prepare. That's what I thought. But Molly Gillen, she got through with her paper during the first term. It wasn't an easy topic. It was a graduate-level topic to show that this, we're gonna get back on topic, I asked you to say it. But to show that there exists a continuous function over the whole real numbers. There's some continuous function over the whole real numbers, overall. So we know what that means. It's nowhere differentiable. You can't take its derivative at any point. But it's always continuous. That means it's so sharp, you know, it's just everywhere wiggling around, but it's continuous at every point. And to create this was awful. It's a known fact. But she spent, we, every week, she did her proof, starting the second week. And it took her an hour and ten minutes every day. Sometimes I faked out. She'd be sitting there talking, I'd talk on the phone. I'm eating, thinking about what I got to teach the next day. But she practiced all the time, at least once a week, okay? So that, when it came to it, it was very replacing. It wasn't that she didn't think. It wasn't. So that, when it came to it, it was very replacing. It wasn't that she didn't think. It wasn't that she'd stop. She had to look what she'd written. Megan, the other day, I'm going to tell her that. Megan, the other day, practiced hers on Sunday. That's yesterday. And at one point, Megan, I thought, oh, we've practiced this so much. I don't, I think Ma- Megan is in, in, uh, in an automatic zone, you know, automatic, you know, she's just writing it down. You know, she's not paying attention when she, she's done it so much. It's like something else when I drive home. You know, I'm thinking, you know, I've already turned here. I've already gone, where'd that truck come from? I'm not paying attention, okay? You know, that happens for me. And I thought that happened for you Sunday. I wasn't sure, but, but it's good to kind of be alert. And it's not easy to say these things, okay? It's not. So we had to do practice. We're doing something hard. Okay, that's why we're here today. Because it's not easy to do. Okay, that's the monotone convergence theorem. Anyway, that's enough of the talking. We've got to keep going and pick what line we're talking about. Let's move on. The next one is the Bolzmann, I think. No, I think it's something I missed. The monotone subsequence. So the monotone. I don't want that name. Oh, that's. Subsequence theorem. Okay. So here's what this says. Oh, it says the following. The name says it all. Read the name. Monotone subsequence theorem. It says, every sequence has a monotone. Subsequence. That's what it says. Every sequence has a monotone subsequence. Let's look. John looked earlier and said, hey, is this something we've got to prove on this one? No. No, we don't prove this one. Every subsequence has a monotone. I'm sorry. Every sequence has a monotone subsequence. Very easy. Every sequence has a monotone subsequence. In a homework assignment, we think back. I asked you, here's a sequence, find a. Monotone subsequence. Remember I did it for sine?
Cosine.
Or cosine, something like that. Remember that? So, I mean, we know from a problem that we've done, I had to work on, that every sequence has a monotone subsequence. What does it mean to be monotone? It means it's either increasing or decreasing, okay? So one of those. All right. So what, Audrey, what does the monotone subsequence theorem say?
Every sequence of a monotone subsequence.
That's what it says. I mean, this is something David, you're hoping that I ask, because it's very easy to state. What is it?
Every sequence has a monotone subsequence.
What is it, Mariah?
Every sequence of a monotone.
Megan, what's it say? John, what's it say?
Every sequence has a monotone subsequence.
That's what it says. Is that okay with everybody? The name is also a clue, okay? I mean, they're, we don't name things. Uh, mathematicians, we name things after what they do. Absolute max is the biggest.
Like the balls eye and the wide.
Or we name them after somebody who figured it out. We do that, that last part in terms of recognition of somebody's work, and we give the name of the person who does something. And we do this tradition. All of us do this just in case we figure out something, because we want our names associated too, and so we say, hey.
I have, hold on, I have a question.
All right.
Was that one, the one we just talked about, was the proof of that one, the one where we talked about the peaks?
It was.
Okay.
That's what was involved here, was the peaks. You had infinitely many peaks.
Or finite.
Or finite, that's what the two cases were. That's right. And listen, I'm going to tell everybody, this is not something I'm asking you, okay? But it's good to be able to remember. Some of these, it's good to be able to remember proofs, or think about how they go, or have some idea. I want to tell you, to come up with a proof on your own without any, uh, guidance, that's hard. So when we think about this course, and say, oh, my God, somebody came up with all this? Nope. Individuals came up with a single item, and we compiled it all to be the course. Does that make sense? So for you to come up with it all, you'd be beating every mathematician that's out there. Is that okay? Boy, these people were fantastic. But, but you're not going to be expected to do that. So what we're expected to do is say, let's, let's remember what they did. Let's make sure it makes sense to us, what they did. And so the peaks is what this theorem's about. The proof of that theorem. All right, anyway, what's next? The next guy's the Bolzmann-Birchcraft theorem, okay? I mean, it's easy to say too. What's the Bolzmann-Birchcraft theorem say? Here's what it says. The Bolzmann-Birchcraft theorem says. Oh, gosh, what does it say? It says, every sequence has a, no. It says, every bounded sequence has a convergent subsequence. Every bounded sequence has a convergent subsequence. Every bounded sequence has a convergent subsequence. That's what the Bolzmann-Birchcraft theorem says. Says, every bounded sequence has a convergent subsequence. What's the same here?
Every bounded sequence has a convergent subsequence.
That's what it says. What's it say, David? What's the name of the theorem we're talking about, Audrey? What's it say? That's what it says? John, what is the monotone subsequence theorem?
Every sequence has a monotone subsequence.
Megan, what's the monotone convergence theorem?
A monotone sequence converges if and only if it is bounded. Moreover, if X of N is increasing bounded, then X of N converges to the supremal. And if X of N is decreasing bounded, then X of N converges to the infinal.
That's right. Okay. If you look a little further down the list. It says, we need to know this proof. So I'm going to talk about this proof too. As soon as John tells you, what does the Bolzmann-Birchcraft theorem say?
Every bounded sequence has a convergent subsequence.
Megan, what does the Bolzmann-Birchcraft theorem say?
Every bounded sequence has a convergent subsequence.
Good. That's good for all of us. Okay. So how's it proved? Because that's something we should know. That's something on the list, okay? So I'm, look, I'm not asking you to know it all. I'm narrowing it down a little bit. One of the students who took this class in 2003 told me once, that they retook the class at Marshall University. He said, the professor did the same, essentially the same course that you did. Except they didn't narrow it down. So at the test time, we had to know it all. And guess what? My grade was worse. That's what he said. He said, but, you know. It was essentially the same course. It wasn't exactly. He said, and then we covered the same type, which made me feel good. You know, I, I was a new professor. I didn't know that I was doing something that was. He said, yeah, you're doing exactly what somebody else is doing, or fairly composed. But he said, I didn't do as good, because they didn't focus. So anyway. But that was supposed to be a graduate level course, even though it's a, you could take it as an undergraduate or graduate. Proof. Okay. So what's it say? We want to show. Uh, every. Bounded. S- sequence. This is short word. Has. A convergent. Subsequence. You know, we've used that lately. In that Max-Min theorem, we used it. Yet today, we use it. Okay, all right. Uh, so we're going to let X of N. Be a bounded sequence. Okay, so, okay, so we've got a bounded sequence. Well, forget this bound. By the monotone subsequence theorem, forget this boundary present. By monotone. Subsequence. Theorem. X of N has a. Monotone.
Subsequence.
Subsequence. Let's call it X of N sub K. The K one. Okay, well, wait a minute. Now let's go back to the only other thing that I said to ignore it for a second, and that was that X of N was bounded. If X of N is bounded, then any subsequence of it is bounded. So X of N sub K is bounded. I'm almost done, okay? Wait a minute. Then we're looking at X of N sub K. What do we know about X of N sub K? It is a bounded monotone sequence. What do we know about every bounded monotone sequence?
Convergent.
That converges. Why don't you tell me that?
The monotone convergent theorem.
About the monotone convergence theorem. X of N sub K. Converges. Because it is a bounded monotone. Sequence. Forget it's a subsequence. It's a sequence. And every bounded, uh, every monotone sequence converges if and only if it is. Bounded. And this guy is bounded, so it converges. So this is a convergent subsequence of X of N. And that's what we're trying to prove, that X of N is bounded, had a convergent subsequence. That's it. Is that okay with everybody? So if I put that on there, man, I'm going to ask you to state it, maybe. I would ask you to state. If I asked you this question, I would say, state and prove the Bolzmann-Birchcraft theorem. So I give you a few points for stating, okay? Three or four. And then for proving, proof's easy. So it won't be that much. Maybe total points altogether, nine. Okay, ten, something like that. It'd be terrible. Won't be tremendous, but it'll be something. So let's say I ask you, let's say it's nine. If we could state everything we're supposed to, and, uh, the definitions and the, the name theorem, that's 35 points. If you throw in this one fast, we're up to 44. You know, we ain't, we aren't passing, but if we're 44 out of 44. It's going to be hard for us to fail, especially if we get the limit function, the limit of the function wrong. You're going to give epsilon, you're going to see what we're giving, going to look for a delta, I'm going to give you a linear one, it's going to be the same type that you had on the homework. In the continent, we, maybe those combined would be 16. We're talking about 16, pass. Then we start to talk about, let's get a good grade. Does that make sense? Is that all right? That's the way I'm being critical of this. Today, and we're going to go a little further, okay? Today, um, I had read online for Alabama sports, okay? That there's, there's an Alabama guy who, uh, has graduated, he's in graduate, he went into the NFL early. I think he's a good student. He don't wait till he graduates before he makes millions of dollars. I don't think that. You can come back and get your degree. Shaquille O'Neal came back after 10 years. Well, that degree's going to help him a lot, you know. Without that degree, he won't make me, he's already made millions. The degree will help him a lot anyway, but he's already made his life's money that he needs to. None wrong, getting a degree is important. He's already made millions, okay, for money wise, he said. Anyway, this guy goes into the pros, Mar Cooper, very good, uh, wide receiver from Alabama, very good, maybe the best wide receiver in the current NFL draft. There's a guy close to him. Name is White. He played for West Virginia, okay? Alabama played with West Virginia special. The guy White from West Virginia had a great game, he's, uh, over 100 yards, caught a couple touchdown passes. He made one spectacular catch. Played well. And he's, he's been popping off a little bit, mouthing off. He said, you know, against Alabama's defense, I did, this was headlines, Alabama online site, he said, I did whatever I wanted to. So I read that. He had a great game. And what I thought in my mind, so just so you can see a little bit of my personality, was, sure, I'm glad he didn't win the game. If he did whatever he wanted to, okay, then he must not have wanted to win the game, because they didn't. Okay? That's why I asked me. Now, look, Alabama wanted to be on Ohio State. We didn't. Ohio State played a good game. Good for them. We don't have any regrets. Maybe not throwing that interception for a touchdown. I think I might have made a big difference. Maybe tackling that guy on the sidelines made a difference, but anyway. Ohio State played better. They deserved to win. You don't hear Alabama players say, well, we did whatever we wanted to in Ohio State, because we didn't. We wanted to win, and we didn't. That's part of it. Anyway, enough of that. That's just a little bit aside. Well, we're off. Come on, let's start doing some more. The next thing we want to do is the Koshing criterion for convergent sequence. We won't know that guy. Okay, so we're just trying to learn what it says. It's not something I'm going to ask you, uh, to prove. It's on the list. What does it say? It says the following. Says in R, in the real numbers, okay? That's the way I prefaced it. In R. A sequ- X of N, a sequence of real numbers, X of N, is convergent if and only if it is.
Cauchy.
Cauchy. What did we just say? We just said Cauchy and in R. Cauchy and convergence mean the. Same thing. So in R, a sequence of real numbers. Is convergent if and only if it is. Cauchy. Okay? Not going to ask you to prove it. Not on this test. If you look at the final exam. It's there. So it's something that could be there, okay? Right now, we just won't be able to state it. What does it say? Says, uh, a sequence of real numbers is convergent if and only if it is. Cauchy. So this is a statement that's about real numbers. Sequence of real numbers is convergent in R if and only if it is Cauchy. Can you say it, Mariah?
In R, a sequence of, a sequence of real numbers is convergent if and only if it is Cauchy.
John, can you say it?
Uh, a sequence X of N converges in R if and only if X of N is Cauchy.
Megan, can you say it?
A sequence of real numbers that's in, converges if and only if the sequence is Cauchy.
That's right. Audrey, can you say it?
Sequence of real numbers in R is convergent if and only if the sequence is Cauchy.
Got it. Can you say it? In R, a sequence of real numbers is convergent if and only if it is Cauchy.
That's right. Did everybody say it? Okay. That's what it says. All right. What's next? So what's next is, uh, the sequential criterion for functional limits. Sequential criterion for functional limits. We're going to state these last two, and that's it. Then we're going to worry about proofs, okay? Next time. So proofs and a few of the problems types, that's it. And maybe we'll repeat some of these definitions next year we get. And the definitions come up, okay, in doing these problems and these proofs, okay? That's why the definitions are important for us. You got to know what, we got to know, we got to know what we're talking about. That's what the definitions are. It's what known in theory. Hey, we want to prove this theorem. What's that? Does it say? All right. The sequential criterion for functional limits, here's what it says. You got to have setup. What's the setup?
You have A, B, and subset of R. You're the F goat from A to R.
We're talking about functional limits. You're going to let C be A. Plus four, because we're talking about limits of functions. Then the following statements are equivalent. Here's the statements. The following statements are equivalent. What are they? The limit as X goes to C of F of X equals Delta. That's one statement. The second statement is this. If. X of N is a subset of A, with X of N being different than C, and the limit as N goes to infinity, of X of N equal to C. Then, F of X of N converges to.
L.
L. Is that okay with everybody? So if for each, the bottom part says, if for each sequence that's in A, that converges to C and none of its terms are C. If that forces, if that happens, for every, if, for every sequence that falls in that category, L of that sequence converges to L, okay? So that's, uh, again, a sequence of numbers. It's out of range. F of X of N converges to L. Then that's going to force the limit as X goes to C. That's the same thing, saying the limit as X goes to C of F of X equals L. That's the sequential criteria for functional limits. It's got a setup. It says the two statements are equivalent. Got to be able to say both statements. Megan, can you say it?
When A, B, and subset of real numbers, F goes from A to R, I mean, real numbers and C being closer to the A. Then the following statements are equivalent, one more. One, the limit as X goes to C of F of X equals to L. And two, if X of N subset of A such that X of N is zeroed upon each other for all in L and R. And the limit as N goes to infinity of X of N is equal to C, then F of X of N converges to L.
L, that's right. If L's in the top part, it's in the bottom part, too. Mariah, can you say it?
Let A be a subset of R, where F go from A to R, and C be a cluster point of A, then the following statements are equivalent. One, the limit as X goes to C, F of X equals L. And two, if X of N is a subset of A, with X of N being different than C, and the limit of X going to infinity, X of N equals C, then F of X of N converges to L.
Okay. You said the limit is what?
X goes to infinity?
It shouldn't be.
X goes to C?
N goes to infinity. When we're talking about X of N.
Okay.
Audrey?
Let A be a subset of R, F go from A to R, and C be a cluster point of A. Then one, the limit as X goes to C of F of X equals L. And two, if if X of N is a subset of A such that X of N is different from C for all.
You know, I haven't been saying that. It's for all in element of natural numbers. Yeah, that's right. I haven't been saying it.
For all in element of natural numbers. And if the limit as N goes to infinity of X of N equals C, then the
F of X of N's.
F of X of N converges to L.
That's right.
Okay.
John?
Let F go from A to R, where A is a subset of R, and let C be a cluster point of A. Then the limit as X goes to C of F of X equals L, if and only if every sequence X of N is in A, with X of N different from C for all in element of the natural numbers, and the limit as N goes to infinity of X of N equals C, then the limit as N goes to infinity of F of X of N equals L.
That's right. David, can you say it?
Let A be a subset of R, F go from A to R, and C be a cluster point of A. The following statement, so you put it like, the limit as X goes to C of F of X equals L, and if X of N is a subset of A.
X of N is a sequence in A, yep. Subset of A? That's what we're talking about. No, that's what we say. X of N is a subset of A?
Is a subset of A, with X of N大于C.
For all in element of natural numbers. That's what I had been saying. And?
And the limit as N approaches infinity, X of N equals
C.
C.
X of N's are input values. They're gonna go to the input value of C, except it's not really an input value. It's a cluster point for the domain, anyway.
As, as that occurs, then the limit as N approaches infinity of X of N?
F of X of N.
F of X of N to equal L.
That's right. All right, Audrey, one of the things I don't know that you said was that the following statements are equivalent.
Equivalent.
Yeah. So that's something to keep in mind. Okay? Is that all right with everybody? Now, I'm gonna say something, or repeat something. I said to you that the name says it all. What's the name of this? The sequential, sequential is talking about sequences. The sequential criterion for functional limits. So it's relating sequences and function limits. And so you're just saying, limit as X goes to C of F of X equals L. That's the first one, it's equivalent to it. And the second one, the sequence that we're talking about's got three, three characteristics. It's in A, is never C, and it converges to C. So that's what we're saying. So, don't let me bother you. But what does it mean to converge? It means the limit is N goes to infinity of X of N equals to C. That's what it means, okay? Then the conclusion is F of X of N, which is a sequence of output values, converges to L. That's what it says. All right, the last one, we're gonna begin with this. So I hope I didn't waste too much of your time. The sequential criterion for continuity. I think that's what it says. This last thing. Is that the last thing?
Yes.
Okay. So it's very similar. Wait a minute. Okay, so what does it got to say? So let's see. So again, we're gonna have a setup. It's, it's the sequential criterion for functional limits, okay? So it's gonna be sequences? No, it says it's, it says it's sequential criteria for, for continuity. Okay? So it's gonna have sequences and continuity. So, wait a minute. Let me see if I can remember. We got a setup. Let A be a subset of R. Megan, don't let me make this up. Let A be a subset of R. Let F go from A to R, and let C be cluster point. No! Let C be an element, because we're talking about continuity. For limits, we talk about cluster points. For continuity, the C's gotta be in the domain. Okay? So don't let that, you know, that's the way it is throughout. It's consistent, okay? Okay, so let C be an element of A. Now, here, John, we say it. Now, we said, we said with an if and only if statement. What you said for the sequential criterion for functional limits was equivalent. Means if and only. But we normally say the following statements are equivalent, okay? But you said if and only, it's okay. But then here we say, then, then, we'd say, F of X is continuous at C if and only if for each sequence X of N that's in A with the limit as N goes to infinity of X of N equal to C. So it doesn't have to be different than C. With the limit as N goes to infinity of X of N equals C. Then F of X of N converges to, not L, F of C. F of C. So it's an if and only if statement between those two things. All right. Sorry. Let's say what we have. Sequential criterion for function? No. The sequential criterion for continuity. What does it say? Says let A be a subset of R. F go from A to R. C be an element of A. We say F is continuous at C if and only if for each X of N that's a subset of A where the limit as N goes to infinity of X of N equaling to C, then F of X of N converges to F of C. John, can you say it?
Let, let A be a subset of R, let F go from A to R, and let C be an element of A. Then, function F is continuous at C if and only if for each sequence X of N in A with the limit as N goes to infinity of X of N equal to C. Then the limit as N goes to infinity of F of X of N equals F of C.
That's right. David, can you say it?